Okay, we have the agenda review session. We have ordinance on second reading number one. In ordinance to amend supplementary rights and warrants to the city of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles in Traffic, Stopping, Standing, Parking, Section 10.16, .210, Schedule 38, Timelined Parking Areas in regards to Sedan Street. We have ordinances on first reading number one. In ordinance to amend supplementary rights and warrants to the city of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles in Traffic, Chapter 10.12, Traffic Control Regulations, Section 10.12.060 and 10.12.070, Schedule 8A, Loading Zones in regards to Seaman Street. And two, in ordinance to amend supplementary rights and warrants to the city of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles in Traffic, Chapter 10.16, Stopping, Standing, Parking, Section 10.16.020, Schedule 24, No Parking Anytime in regards to Main Street. We also have number three. In ordinance to amend supplementary rights and warrants to the city of New Brunswick, Title 13, Public Services, Chapter 13.04, Water Service Systems, Section 13.04.010, and Chapter 13.08, Sewer Service System, Section 13.08.340, Schedule A, Schedule of Charges, Order Rates, Sewer Rates. We have resolutions one to thirty-three. Number one, approve an agenda amendment. Two, approve payroll three sixteen nineteen to three nineteen, three twenty-nine nineteen. Three, authorize refund for redeemed tax sales certificates. Four, authorize lease of copy machine for law department, RicoCo USA Incorporated for one, RicoCo model number MP six five zero three SP copier system, not to exceed three hundred and sixty dollars and fifteen cents per month, commencing May first, twenty nineteen and ending April thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, forty-eight month contract, state contract number four zero four six seven slash T dash two zero seven five, dash copiers, maintenance and supplies. Number five, approve request for use of city property requested by the Roosevelt Elementary School in New Brunswick Board of Ed. Location, U.S. War complex up front Lower Fields for abnormal Roosevelt Elementary School Field Day, Friday, May thirty-first, twenty nineteen. The rain date is Thursday, June thirteenth, twenty nineteen, nine a.m. to two thirty p.m. Number six, approve request for street closure requested by New Brunswick City Market. Location, the street to be closed, George Street from New Street to Byard Street and Livingston Avenue from George Street to New Street, Liberty Street for twenty nineteen city center, October fifth, Saturday, October twelfth, twenty nineteen, ten a.m. to seven p.m. police action duty. Number seven, approve request for use of city property and sidewalk requested by Lincoln Annex School, New Brunswick Board of Ed, Lincoln School Field Day. Location is Bugle Park Pavilion and Mansion and the lawn. Sidewalk use, students and staff will walk through from one sixty-five Somerset Street to Bugle Park, Friday, May thirty-first, twenty nineteen. The rain date is Friday, June seventh, twenty nineteen, seven thirty a.m. to two thirty p.m. Number eight, approve request for use of city property and closure of streets requested by the Veterans Alliance of Raritan Valley Incorporated for Memorial Day parade with opening ceremony at Monument Square Park. Park location is Monument Square Park, street closure Livingston Avenue, Waltham Street, George Street, Albany Street, Raritan Avenue, Woodbridge Avenue, Monday, May twenty-seventh, twenty nineteen, ten thirty a.m. to eleven thirty a.m. Number nine, approve request for use of city property requested by Zeta Tab Alpha. Location, Bugle Park Pavilion Field Day Event, April fourteenth, twenty nineteen, two p.m. to six p.m. The rain date is Sunday, April twenty-eighth, twenty nineteen, twelve p.m. to four p.m. Number ten, approve amendment resolution RF zero seven one seven five four, reason to pay additional legal fees in the amount of one thousand one hundred and thirty-nine dollars to Lawrence Bitterman Esquire, Police Officer Michael Powers, and the matter of Deion Napier versus City of New Brunswick at all, not to exceed one thousand one hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Number eleven, approve request for use of city property requested by St. Peter's Health Care System, New Brunswick Recreation, Civic Legal Credit, New Brunswick Incorporated, Robert Wood Johnson University Hospital, Recreation Park, Community Health Care Junction as a New Brunswick Recreation Day of Fun, Saturday, June first, twenty nineteen, ten a.m. to four p.m., police action duty. Number twelve, approve request for use of city property requested by Aliza Promis, Joyce Kilmer Park, Arcata Esperanza Market, Sunday, April fourteenth, twenty nineteen, May twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen, June thirtieth, twenty nineteen, August twenty-fifth, twenty nineteen, September twenty-ninth, twenty nineteen, and October twenty-seventh, twenty nineteen, nine a.m. to eight p.m. Thirteen, approve request for street closure and use of Monument Square requested by the New Brunswick City Market. Street closure location, George Street from New Street to Byard Street, Livingston Avenue from George Street to New Street and Liberty Street for the holiday tree lighting show, mobile performers, and cook-off, Friday, December sixth, twenty nineteen, four p.m. to eight p.m. at the park, three p.m. to eight thirty p.m. street closure, police action duty. Number fourteen, approve emergency temporary appropriations for twenty nineteen. Fifteen, approve request for use of city sidewalk requested by the New Brunswick Soccer League Incorporated, Robert Stellano, Maria Guadalupe Sagrillo, Caesar Pietro, Giovanni Pietro, Miguel Angel Casseco, El Torio Lopez, Florentino, Jorgito, Doris Azario, and Antonio Orellor for peaceful awareness walk about gang violence and drugs, beginning at ninety-six Lee Avenue to Waltham Street to Remsen Avenue to Stamford Street to Commercial Avenue to George Street to Troop Avenue to Walton Street, ending at ninety-six Lee Avenue, Saturday, April sixth, twenty nineteen, Saturday. The rain date is Saturday, April thirteenth, twenty nineteen, ten a.m. to twelve p.m. Number sixteen, approve award of contract with Creative Products Sourcing Incorporated, living business as Dare Catalog, for purchase proprietary goods for the police department, not to exceed eight thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. Number seventeen, authorized purchase by police department under state contract A eighty-one three four eight slash T dash zero one two six, they have police and homeland security equipment and supplies from Langton Associates Incorporated, thirty-one bulletproof vests for the police department, not to exceed twenty-three thousand four hundred and forty-three dollars and seventy-five cents. Eighteen, approve award of contracts to furnished delivered trees for spring tree planting program for the Parks Department, Marbado Nursery Corporation for items CDEGHIJLRT, not to exceed twelve thousand seven hundred and sixty-one dollars, with Schickdol's Nursery items AFPX and JJ, not to exceed nine thousand four hundred and seventy-eight dollars, with Ocean Wholesale Nursery Incorporated for items BKQ, UVWYLAWCWDGGHIKLLNN, not to exceed thirteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars and eighty cents, and with Plant Detectives Incorporated for items NNOSZBBEEFFMM, not to exceed eleven thousand nine hundred and forty-one dollars and fifteen cents, specification number seven fifty dash nineteen P. Number nineteen, approve award of contract with Jay Swan Fuel Oil Company Incorporated, furnished delivered diesel fuel for the department solid works, called on period commencing April sixth, twenty nineteen, and ending April fifth, twenty twenty, specification under seven four six, dash one nine P, not to exceed sixty-eight thousand dollars. Number twenty, approve resolution to set a hearing date for ABC charges for Perso Incorporated trading as Materi Bar, fourteen Jersey Avenue, liquor license number one two one four dash three three dash zero four seven dash zero zero five, dated April seventeenth, twenty nineteen. Twenty-one, approve amendment resolution RF zero nine one seven six eight, reason to pay additional legal fees in the amount of four hundred and eighty-four dollars and fifty cents to Lawrence Bitterman Esquire, or Police Detective Ryan McGraw, the matter of James C. Campbell versus the city of New Brunswick at all, not to exceed four hundred and eighty-four dollars and fifty cents. Twenty-two, authorize lease of copper machines in Division of Construction Code from RicoCo USA Incorporated, the one RicoCo model MPC two five zero three G copier system, not to exceed two hundred and nine dollars and eighty cents per month, commencing May first, twenty nineteen, and ending April thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, forty-eight month contract, state contract number four zero four six seven slash G dash two zero seven five, copiers, maintenance, and supply. Twenty-three, approve on premise raffle fifty fifty at eighty-five Curst Street, New Brunswick for court appointing special advocate to the New Jersey paper, the date is Sunday, May sixth, twenty nineteen. Number twenty-four, approve request for use of city property by the city of New Brunswick, Boyd Park Annual Raritan River Council, Saturday, September twenty-first, twenty nineteen, instead of only, at nine a.m. to nine p.m. Sunday, September twenty-second, twenty nineteen is the event date, event hour, twelve p.m. to six p.m., park use of hour, at nine a.m. to nine p.m. police action duty. Twenty-five, authorized purchase by police department under New Jersey State approved Co-op, number six five dash MCESCCPS, the Educational Services Commission of Jersey Pressing System, from Cable Vision Lightcap Incorporated, doing business as Cable Vision Lightcap, New Jersey LLC, Altis Business, IP address, it's twenty-four month period, commencing April first, twenty nineteen, and ending March thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, not to exceed one thousand two hundred and forty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents, non-pro-tongue. Twenty-six, approve amendment resolution RF zero two one nine seven zero, reason for consent Sunday work, approve relaxation of city noise ordinance requested by PSE&amp;G on behalf of contractor Ancles of McCoy for PSE&amp;G, the touching trench burling and electric transmission project, reason one, complete critical activity, the transmission wire pulled over Route eighteen into New Brunswick, reason two, installation of access roads, matting, PGA, stone removable wire, demo of existing structures, and installation of monoliths of wire, dates Sunday from April seventh, twenty nineteen, through May twelfth, twenty nineteen, eight a.m. to six p.m. Twenty-seven, approve relaxation of city noise ordinance requested by Jay Super and Son Trucking and Rigging Company Incorporated, place a crane on Robert Wood Johnson University Hospital property for the roofing materials, Saturday, April sixth, twenty nineteen, alternate date is Saturday, April thirteenth, twenty nineteen, time eight a.m. to five p.m. Twenty-eight, authorized extension of contract with Wellness Coaches USA for health and injury prevention services of the city of New Brunswick employees, term of six month period commencing January first, twenty nineteen, ending June thirtieth, twenty nineteen, not to exceed twenty thousand dollars, non-pro-tongue. Twenty-nine, approve relaxation of city noise ordinance and road closure requested by PGM Cannibal Contractors Incorporated, place a crane at Robert Wood Johnson University Hospital for the purpose of placing HVAC equipment on the roof, crane placed on Somerset Street, road closed on Somerset Street from High Street to Hardenberg Street, Saturday, April thirteenth, twenty nineteen, open date is Saturday, April twenty, twenty nineteen, and May fourth, twenty nineteen, eight a.m. to five p.m. Thirty, authorized purchase by police department under state contract A eighty-five nine four three slash T dash seventeen seven six, data communications network services, Verizon Business Network Services Incorporated for private data line service, term February eleventh, twenty nineteen, February tenth, twenty twenty, not to exceed twenty-eight thousand five hundred and nine dollars, non-pro-tongue. For thirty-one, Housing Authority appointment, board reappointment, name Kevin Jones expires April third, twenty twenty-four, five year, Dale Paulwell expires April third, twenty twenty-three, five year. Thirty-two, authorized tax collector transfer over payments on several taxing utility accounts. Thirty-three, approve rejection of bid and authorization to redid for the food preparation services for the New Brunswick seniors, Citizen Resource Center, redid specification number seven four five dash one nine, RFP, item center up. Here we go. All orders, all the roll please.
Councilmember Egan?
Here.
Councilmember Escobar?
Here.
Councilmember Fleming?
Here.
Council Vice President Socorro Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Here.
Please be advised that the notice requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act have been complied with and satisfied in annual notice, which gives sufficient notice of the time, place, and conduct of all public meetings with the municipal council of the city of New Brunswick, has been filed with the city clerk, who will place on the appropriate bulletin board in the lobby of City Hall, New Brunswick, New Jersey, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper for the city of New Brunswick, named and homed. You're able to please stand and pledge your name.
I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A homens siles if you will, for our men who have been serving in our armed forces home and abroad, especially those who have given their lives or have come home injured. Thank you. With motion, Mr. Chairman, approve minutes, the box six.
Second.
Hold call.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council Vice President Socorro Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes, we're a correspondent by the city clerk.
Item one, a certified copy of ordinance nineteen dash zero six, adopted by the East Brunswick Township Council on March twenty-fifth, twenty nineteen, regarding amending Chapter two-two-eight zoning of the township of East Brunswick. Item two, a letter from the Division of Alcohol and Beverage Control in regards to Duamari's liquor license. Item three, a letter from the State of New Jersey Department of Transportation regarding the fiscal year twenty nineteen municipal aid program for the Handy Street Project. Item four, a letter from Bristol Myers Squibb in regards to the twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen annual vapor intrusion monitoring. Item five, a letter from the State of New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection regarding one five hundred and fifty gallon, number two, heating oil underground storage tank system. Item six, a letter from the Hamilton Street Realty LLC requesting the release of their bond. Item seven, a letter from Middlesex County Board of Taxation in regards to resolution number RF two zero one nine dash zero one. The correspondence will be forwarded to the appropriate department for further action.
Thank you. We have no public hearings, we have a room on second. Ordinance on second reading. In ordinance to amend supplementary rights and warrants to the city of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles in Traffic, Stopping, Standing, and Parking, Section 10.16, .210, Schedule 38, Timelined Parking Areas in regards to Sedan Street. Anyone from the public would like to say anything about that, please approach the microphone. Seeing none.
Move the ordinance seven down April seventeenth, six thirty p.m. same date to be advertised.
Second. Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council Vice President Socorro Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes.
Number two, in ordinance to amend supplementary rights and warrants to the city of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles in Traffic, Chapter 10.12.060 and 10.12.070, Schedule 8A, Loading Zones in regards to Seaman Street.
Move the ordinance seven down April seventeenth, six thirty p.m. same date to be advertised.
Second.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council Vice President Socorro Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes.
Number two, in ordinance to amend supplementary rights and warrants to the city of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles in Traffic, Chapter 10.16, Stopping, Standing, and Parking, Section 10.16.020, Schedule 24, No Parking Anytime in regards to Main.
Move the ordinance seven down April seventeenth, six thirty p.m. same date to be advertised.
Second.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council Vice President Socorro Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes.
And number three, the ordinance to amend supplementary rights and warrants to the city of New Brunswick, Title 13, Public Services, Chapter 13.04, Water Service Systems, Section 13.04.010 and Chapter 13.08, Sewer Service System, Section 13.08.340, Schedule A, Schedule of Charges for Order Rates and Sewer Rates.
Move the ordinance setting down April seventeenth, six thirty p.m. same date to be advertised.
Second.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council Vice President Socorro Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?
Yes.
We have resolutions one, two, thirty, three. Any member from the public would like to talk about the resolution? Give your name and address for the record, you have up to five minutes on time, please.
Good evening, I'm Council Charles Cradville, of New Brunswick, New Brunswick today. I'd like to ask about these two matters that are, I guess lawsuits filed against the city and its police, nine-ten and nine-twenty-one. Is the police director here today? I don't see him, I've never seen him here. Not here. Is there any representative of the police here tonight?
Not here tonight, not this night.
No, no representative of the police. Is there anybody who can address this, perhaps the law department, tell us what the stage of each of these cases is at, and what the nature of the allegations is?
We'll talk.
Yes, Mr. Council President, both cases involve allegations of false arrest, and I believe that one of the plaintiffs actually may be pro se. The case has been pending a while, with attorney and discovery phase, and these are pay of Mr. Bitterman's bills, he represents local officers in connection with punitive damage claims only.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are these federal or Superior Court?
I believe one is federal and one is Superior Court, but don't quote me on that, I should check and make sure I'm including files.
Can I know a little bit about what the ABC charges are for the, I guess that's me, Tiara Bar, nine-twenty?
Mr. Council President, members of council, this, the charges will formally come before you when the matter is listed for hearing, which the agenda seeks the seventeenth of April. They are charges for violations of ABC rules and regulations, such as allowing altercations to occur, some illegal activity to occur in and about the licensed premises. They are pretty significant and extensive. They take back several months, and the police department has charged the establishment in pursuit of law, a hearing is required before the council.
Thanks. This is related to the police activity there back in October, I think?
There was some activity back there then, and some thereafter.
Okay. Thank you. Finally, just want to ask about nine-thirty-one, the council is reappointing these two folks to the Housing Authority Board. Has the mayor reappointed his person, perhaps the city clerk?
I believe that there was a mayoral appointment, is Mr. Cradville referring to Mr. Wolfie?
Correct.
Yeah, I believe Mr. Wolfie was reappointed as a mayoral appointment.
Okay, and that was recently?
I think simultaneously with the, the appointments before council for their consideration.
Oh, I think the council knows my feelings on all three of those officials.
Same. Thank you. Anybody else on the resolutions, only this, seeing none?
Move resolutions.
Second. Council, Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council Vice President Socorro Ludwig?
Yes.
That's staying on twenty-three, unless someone else?
Do note it. Council President Anderson?
Yes.
We have items for discussion by the council, anybody get the records up, anything?
Just wanted to remind everybody that the L'Oui is coming back, the first L'Oui out this year is going to be April fourteenth, this is Sunday, from eleven to four, open streets, do you have quiet bike? Everybody's invited.
Just a reminder, we do have a board of education going on April sixteenth, just for notification before our next meeting. Okay. Who else? All right. We have a public comment, if you have a public comment, would you please come up to the microphone, give your name and address again, we have up to five minutes, one time up.
Yes, then we'll return to Somerset Street. I'd just like to start off with, I'm glad this is the beginning of April, I will say thank you, good job to street cleaning this, this week, even though I hope the residents will still take care of their property, it's good to see that a lot of the streets were clean, and I will say the street cleaning, they did a lot of extra work to make sure that a lot of streets were cleaned, I will say thank you on that. Also, I'd like to say thank you for the corner of Somerset and Alexander Street, where I mentioned to you about little boy getting hit and a man getting hit within three months. I did see that the traffic authority did put the orange cones there in one area, and I will present the picture to Mr. Tom, where I'm still asking for the orange stick due to where it says no parking anytime by this store, due to where it's still a car that parks there, and I said not for me to turn in anyone's license plate, I will block it out when I do get the pictures, but with the car being there at all times, it creates a blind zone, where you cannot see anyone in the walkway, and like I said, it's very dangerous, I will present the pictures also with the traffic meeting tomorrow. I thank you for the work that was done for that corner. Has anyone heard any word on Livingston Avenue, the project that is still waiting on, depending on six million dollars?
The latest that I've heard is that the state has completed their review, it's on to the federal government, county's still optimistic to get it started this summer. That's the latest that I have.
So guaranteed that it will be done, or you're?
Nothing yet.
Oh, okay, then, oh, okay, and then, okay, has the city and county got together far as the light signals on French and Sedan?
I can speak that we had a preliminary meeting with the county last week regarding not just the signal at Sedan, Lewis, and French, but also we're encouraging them, and they seem very receptive, and try to address the other light, which is at Handy, Jersey, and French, because that, if that light isn't working, even though we do improvements to the light at Lewis and French, it's still going to create problems, so we request that we look at the whole corridor, so we're, we had a first meeting, we presented a couple suggestions to them, and we're just waiting to hear back, probably, so it's in process.
Okay, thank you, then my question is, due to where, any letters for Commercial Avenue, due to where I said I will volunteer to pass out to the residents about changing their address, has anything been written?
Yes, a letter has been written, but we're going to be submitting the letter through the direct mail process, how we normally do it. We're also waiting on a couple other pieces, FAQ for residents and business owners on what's coming down the pipeline, and then how can all of our partners and agencies make sure that the information is, that they're aware, so everybody's on the same page when their street goes from commercial officially to public.
So you're delivering to every resident?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And also far as an update, has Lee and Fulton Street, the corner of Lee and Fulton Street been repaired by the PSE&amp;G company yet from their damage?
To my knowledge, no, but we expect them back in town shortly, in May, they're going to revamp their resurfacing program on certain areas of town, and then right after college out in June, they have a whole different attack plan, so we believe that'll be addressed at that time.
Okay, thank you, then one last question I have, has the Board of Education come to the city for any donations to help out with the schools for air conditioning?
Sir?
No, they have not.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Evening, once again, Charles Cradville, of New Brunswick, New Brunswick today. First off, just want to ask about the water and sewer rates, how much are you planning to increase now?
We're planning on putting a surcharge on the water and sewer of, what's that percentage? Two, two percent for residential, and three point nine five percent for commercial users.
Want to compliment the city clerk's office, they've been stellar at, you know, responding to Oprah requests and all that. I do have some questions here for the council. How many nights this year was there a code blue?
I'm not sure, we don't have a copyright.
It was eighteen nights.
Eighteen nights, wow. And do you know how many total overnight guests there were, what the peak number was on the most populated night?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six was the highest number?
Thirty-six on any one night.
And do you know how many total guests?
No.
Okay. I learned that the threshold was changed to twenty-five degrees, maybe even higher, can somebody tell me when that happened and what was done to make it possible?
Don't know exact date, but what was done was, and I'll explain this to Mr. Cradville, what we did was, we added five more shifts. So the shifts were added in a way, the original code blue, there were two shifts, seven to one and one to seven a.m. So at some point it made it a challenge for some volunteers who really wanted to come out to, had to sit there for an entire shift. So we implemented and tried it out, five more shifts, which would give a setup shift, breakdown shift, and then increments of, I think, three hours, three hour shifts, and it worked out well, so we tried it for the last two weeks of code blue, and it worked out well, two or three weeks of code blue, and what we ended up doing was, we worked with a sorority on campus and a fraternity on campus, who pretty much staffed that entire thing for us.
Wonderful, I'm glad to hear that, and can somebody just tell me what the approximate total cost of the code blue program was for this season?
No.
Not at this time.
Okay, so I think it's good practice to be able to know how much program costs in order to, you know, keep track of that, have metrics, and find ways to best spend those limited resources that the taxpayers are providing. Will I be able to get that answer soon, or do I have to file Oprah requests to get?
Oh, wow, I'll file.
Okay, I will, I just, you know, it's always easier when the mayor's office can just provide answers, just so everybody knows, these four questions that I Just so everybody knows, these four questions that I asked, I did ask in writing of Mr. Jones on March nineteenth, March twenty-two, March twenty-five and March twenty-seven. I got no, no answers, if you want to see for yourself, I can show you. But I'll, I'll file an Oprah request and the clerk's office can provide the documents and I can add it up myself, I guess. I have two issues with the parking authority. One of them is very serious, I have here police reports.
Have you taken it up with the parking?
You bet.
Okay.
And, and I was very disappointed with the response, so I have here police reports, these are seven different instances since June, two thousand and fourteen when people, you know, lost their lives, leaping or falling from the, the parking decks to their death. And I brought this up very politely at the February Parking Authority meeting, there had been a suicide on February third from the gateway deck and a lot of people came to me and said they were concerned and they wanted to see something done about it. I brought that issue to the Parking Authority, presented them with a report from the International Parking Institute that includes some common sense things to, you know, prevent or avert these, these tragedies from happening. And I was really disappointed because first of all, the issue was not going to be brought up to the board unless I brought it up, it wasn't part of the executive director's report that day, but what was part of the report was that they're working to install a fence to keep out homeless people who've been staying in the wellness deck. So they've got their priorities out of whack, their priorities are to install fences to keep homeless people out of the deck, but they're unwilling to install fences to keep people from losing their lives, from, from killing themselves. And it's, it's the type of thing that should have been done long ago and I brought it up again at the March meeting and didn't get, didn't get any kind of meaningful response. And I went up to our police director who was on that board after the meeting just to, just to make a personal appeal to him and he, he, he said, you know, something to the effect of Charlie, what makes you think I'm going to talk to you? What makes you think I'm going to talk to you and answer your questions? And I don't think that's any way to treat another public, especially somebody who's one of only five commissioners on that parking authority, powerful agency, as I know you and Councilman, you know you were a part of it. And I said, I said, sir, I don't have any questions for you, I just want to implore you to do the right thing because after all, it's his, his, you know, officers who end up having to deal with these situations when they happen. So now, and now I'm here, there is a representative of the Parking Authority here today, can you ask what the Parking Authority is going to do about this unfortunate situation?
Do you want to answer that?
Well, I really can't, I haven't been able to talk to Mr. Karen about that and right now he's not available, but I'm quite sure when he's back, he'll sit down and do his best to answer.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, I really hope so and.
What do you suggest they do, like put a fence up on, on the concrete line?
Yeah, fences and nets have worked in other communities, I can share with you the IPI report.
So what was the response when you, when you went to the meeting, what asked the parking authority meeting?
It was kind of like, you know, okay, thanks for your comment, but no movement, no action. And, and I don't want anybody else to lose their life, so if we could have some action, certainly if they can prioritize putting a fence to keep the homeless out, I, I think, you know, they should price it out at least and see what it would cost to, to put fences to prevent these tragedies of quicker. Yes, so the final issue with the Parking Authority here, I want to draw your attention, resolution you passed it R. one zero one six five four, and it basically deals with the Farren fantasy over there and they say that the ordinance or the resolution you passed says that by October nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen, if there's not a redevelopment agreement in place, that the NVPA shall cause the roadway to be reopened, that's Church Street that's been closed for years now, shall be reopened as of that date in a condition that meets applicable codes of engineering standards to permit for the both vehicle and pedestrian traffic. That obviously has not happened yet, so the Parking Authority is not abiding by the resolution you passed, so something has to be done about that. And, you know, is there any update on, on what's going to happen at that giant hole in the ground in our beautiful downtown?
I know they're still working on the inner pieces of the puzzle basically to put everybody together.
Okay, and just want to say thank you for mentioning the school board election, many of us fought hard to have the right to vote in that and I hope many people turn out, no matter who you're voting for, get out there and exercise your right, not everybody has the right to vote, so if you do, make sure you use it, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public, seeing that?
Oh, it's Blue Jerk.
Second.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council Vice President Socorro Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Anderson?